Nine o'clock, we're going to go ahead and open up our work session for January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen. If everybody would please silence or set off their cell phones during the meeting time, it'd be appreciated. And please join us in closing the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would Denise, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda at this time?
My fingers.
Okay. With that, we're going to vary just a little bit from our agenda. Bob, nine o'clock, so we'll delay just a couple of minutes. And right now, I would like to ask Jake, we have a presentation. Connie, would you please come forward if you're comfortable?
Come on up. As the board is aware, Connie submitted her intent to retire letter two months ago. And it's with heavy heart that I had to pass that on. And I say that because twenty years ago, when I started doing community corrections, not everybody knows about Lake County. Fifteen years ago, I started coming to Lake County. And people tie Lake County and community corrections to Connie. Connie is the face of community corrections in Lake County. She has been, and she always will be. She started July first, excuse me, nineteen eighty-seven. And it's not, it's not common for a lot of people to stay in one position, in one county, or one organization for twenty-seven years, let alone ten years. People like to move up and move on. One thing that's been constant in Lake County, community corrections, as well as Lakeview. And the face of Lake County community corrections is Connie. So with that said, we are, as community corrections officers, probation officers, we're not fans. We don't make a lot of friends. And, but the one, the thing about it is, we're not paid to be someone's friend. We're paid to work with clients who have broken the rules, broken the law. And Connie never wavered from her integrity. Being born here in Lakeview, raised here in Lakeview, spent her whole life here in Lakeview, Connie never wavered from her integrity. She helped too, helped too to rely, and helped too to herself, in that she helped everybody accountable, and held them to the same level of accountability that she holds herself to. And she's done a remarkable job for Lake County. So again, it's with heavy heart that I had to head stop that letter of intent to retire. So Connie, for your dedicated years of service, the Board of Commissioners and I, and the folks in Lake County, I have a plaque to give to you. And it says, "Lake County Community Justice Presents to Proclamation Officer Connie Nash, starting July first, nineteen eighty-seven through July thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. With sincere appreciation for your dedication and years of service to the Lake County Community Justice and the residents of Lake County." Thank you, Connie.
Speech.
I asked her if she had anything written, and she said, yes, two words, "hi" and "bye."
We appreciate it very much.
Connie, speaking for me and myself, part of the board, we'd like to say thank you so much. Integrity that Jake talks about, in a small community, to do what you've done for twenty-seven years, family, friends, acquaintances, all the things you've had to deal with, hasn't always been easy. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody wanted to say anything or mention anything? Well, thank you very much, Denise. And we're going to move on with our agenda. And Connie, once again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, we're just getting a couple of people from hallway waiting to come in. Our next slide, Bob, will new things come up?
Swear to tell truth.
Bob has requests coming for the commissioners to discuss ODF's fee.
Correct.
Welcome, Bob.
Well, I appreciate the chance to talk to you. I'm here because of this fee that ODF charges me. And I'm really here because of the fact that US Commissioners facilitate this fee by letting them put it on our tax bill, which means that if I don't pay the fee, you can take my property or they can, one of the two. The state, ODF, gets their funds through our taxes, through my taxes. They obviously can't budget very well, because then they need to get more money from us as property owners. And I think it's totally illegal. I know if they found some little thing on a book from years and years ago, that just started them to enable to do this. And so, I'm really, I know that wasn't the intention, otherwise we would have been billed for this for over the last four years. It's just in the last four years that this has come around. And just to tell you my own example, it's not the money, it's the fact that they're taking it from us. And you, as Commissioners, I think your job is to represent us. They don't represent me, and they don't even care what I have to say, so, you know, that's why I'm coming to the commission board, rather than to ODF. And just to show you something, on one ten acres, their fees are eighty-eight percent of the taxes for that piece of property. Also, their fee is twenty-four times what the general fund fee is for that piece of property. Some more facts, their fee is forty-five times higher than a hospital bill. And their fee is two-hundred-and-eight times the library bill. Those are, the hospital and library were voted on. And I feel, you know, that's something we need to do as the county. This fee, this ODF fee, is just taken from us, it's stole from us. Their bill, for this one ten acres, went up seven, well, for all my property, went up seventeen to twenty percent last year. And I have no, no one to complain to, and that's why I'm here complaining to you. I really don't think that's right. And, you know, in five more years, the fee's gonna just keep doubling. And they don't care. Only if you guys could stop it, would they care. They don't care that, that they're charging me. And also, on this ten acres, I don't even know what it's for, what this fee's for. Supposedly, fire protection. We all know, in ten, when ten acres burn, or the neighboring ten acres burn, they're not even gonna get to my ten acres to do anything. So it's not even for a service. And I guess that's what I have to say. I think this is an illegal charge. I don't think they're, they're right in doing it, otherwise they would have done it for years and years. And I don't think the county is right in putting that on a tax bill, you know?
So on that there, wire reader, the elected assessor is also the tax collector.
Correct.
Can you speak to where we collect that for, ODF?
Yeah, we've talked before about this. One thing, this isn't just four years old. This is back from, I believe it was around nineteen twenty-one.
Right, but the taxes didn't start until four years ago. They found it and started, started screwing us.
Reflux or?
Well, they moved the boundary, which, so before that, you were not inside their boundary, but other people were, and they've been paying it. So it's not new.
Okay.
It's new to you, because they moved their boundary, and your property became inside that boundary.
But there was nothing I could do to tell them there's no trees on that boundary, there's no access to that property?
I talked to them about that.
Right, see, now, that's what I would get, that I have to talk to them. And this isn't something, you know, I don't hold this, I hold this against the county for putting it on here. I think, I was an elected official for a while, just a school board, but there's things that went through that the state and the government requested us to do, and they weren't right, and we didn't do them. I think this isn't right, and I don't think our county should be doing this.
The assessors actually agree with you, and they're trying, it's my statute, so they have to do it.
Or what?
But they don't like doing it.
Or what?
We don't get anything out of it, all we do is collect it.
I know, you don't, yeah, you just collect.
And give it over to the state. There's also been a push to, we should be paid for our services to provide, especially when they change their boundary, and it creates some situations. That is pretty dead right now, it's not gonna happen. There's one county that does get paid, which is Huma-Tilla, gets paid a dollar an account to do this, but they have like thirty thousand accounts.
So, so what would happen if, I'm sure this is a budgeted, and if it is, I hope it's not budgeted, but for you to collect this fee, I mean, there's times when you run out of money, I mean, even the private people run out of money. And there's something you just don't do, because you don't have the money. And if the county, if it isn't budgeted, I'd say the county just shouldn't collect it. And I don't, they're not gonna come throw anyone in jail here.
No, but I think the reason they put it on the tax bill is to make sure it gets collected, or you face the foreclosure procedure.
I'd rather face that, I just can't, if they can't justify what, why they're doing it, and they can't, and what this twenty percent increase a year is, and they don't have to justify it to me. But if they can't do it, it's bad.
Just a clarification, the state law, Oregon requires statute, is the one that requires us to count it.
Requires on the tax bill, and collect it and give it over to the state, correct.
And then I heard something about tax delinquency, foreclosure stuff. Were counties required to do that also?
It's just like any other thing on the, on the tax bill, whether it's money that goes to the state or any other district, if the tax bill's not paid, then you're subject to foreclosure. I think that's probably why they did that years ago, to make sure that they can collect their money. I'm not positive I went around them, but.
It's hilarious, spinoff of Commissioner Kestner's question, when you send out tax bills, you send out a total bill.
Total.
And the payment has to be for the total amount of the bill, all the districts, all the assessments in there, not just individual ones. So, anyone who, because I have the same thing, I have a five-acre piece, so if I chose not to pay that assessment, I'd check in, in total, minus that, or I would be subject to foreclosure eventually, because I would be in arrears.
But this thing would hold true if you didn't send your portion to the schools, or to the hospital, or to the cemetery district, or?
Those are county, and I have no problem with paying my fair share to those. I mean, I voted for those, so. But there's just this, and those, only get a three percent a year increase. There's no control on this one. This is out of control, I want to say, of fraudulent organization department, that is out of control, does not know how to budget, but does know how to get money. How much land do they own in Lake County? Does anyone know?
The state?
ODF.
ODF doesn't own any in Lake County, maybe forty here, forty there.
You know, that's, that's ridiculous. What, what does my money go for?
Fire protection, from wildland fire.
And you're saying you can protect that land, because you're charging me a fee? You can bind that ten acres and collect it and fix that before it is burned?
In most cases.
I don't think you will, on this piece of property.
So, so Bob, what you, for the Board of Commissioners and you, Dustin, have this discussion on the state side of it, what you're saying is, Board of Commissioners, and through our taxation, you don't believe that?
I don't think it should be collected, correct.
And that's why you're here for the Board of Commissioners?
Mm-hmm.
The argument for fire protection, all that, will be between you and ODF?
Yeah. Well, is, the reason I'm here is this twenty percent, I know it's gonna be another twenty next year. What already is eighty-eight percent of the tax bill on that piece of property. And I know for a fact, they couldn't protect that piece of property if a fire came.
And I don't really wanna get into fire argument too much.
Right, right, right.
But if, if they have some initial attack, that stops it a little bit away from there, and it doesn't become an event, and take out a bunch of properties that have some value?
Correct, but we all know that before my property was put into the ODF, Thomas Creek was my fire protector. And you knew they tried, they're local, they would be there, if it burns down, it does burn down. I mean, that's, that's just, when you own something that remote, it's gonna burn down. I mean, it's, it's a false statement to say I'm gonna, someone's gonna protect it. I mean, that's a very false statement.
Well, you're talking to somebody that my little five acres did burn, so.
Well, I, I know, but I'm, I'm just saying that, and the cost was a lot less with, with Thomas Creek. And I don't think they just have free rein to take any amount of money they wanted every year or any year. That's what the key is.
Yes. Can you speak to that, Dustin? Is there a cap or anything that it can be increased, or maximum, or minimum, or how is your fee is adjusted year?
So our, our process, one difference, let me go back, the taxes that Bob speaks about for Thomas Creek Westside, or the school, or the library, or the county, is based on a per-value basis. ODF's assessment is based on a per-acre basis. And so there's just a different, just different numerics that we're working with there. In the state of Oregon, what is there, I think, nine natural resource agencies, and those nine natural resource agencies share less than one percent of the general fund budget. And ODF is one of those nine agencies.
You're talking state, general fund?
Correct. And so, in that process, everything, our entire budgeting process is laid out in statute in ORS four-seven-seven. And that statute basically says, we're gonna convene what we call a budget committee, made up of local landowners. There's some from Lake and Klamath County. We budget on a district basis, and our district is Klamath Lake District. Those landowners, they get together and in simplistic form, basically, say, this is the level of protection we want, and this is how many people, engines, dozers, whatever else, kind of, here's, here's what we want for protection. That boils into a dollar figure at the end of that. And then, we look at the number of acres that we protect, and those acres are, that budget is divided by grazing acres and timbered acres, and then divided by the number of acres for, per-acre rate. The general fund now picks up fifty percent of that per-acre rate, the private landowner picks up the other fifty percent in past years. There's some budget issues in Salem, they wanted to change that, that cost share essentially, and put more on the landowners and less on the general fund. And the industrial timber owners and industry have been very successful in maintaining that as a fifty percent rate through history. In the Klamath Lake District, without looking at the exact numbers, in the recent past, that rate fluctuated, has fluctuated from, you know, just a little over a dollar, up to a dollar forty for timber acres, and, you know, maybe twenty-some cents to forty or fifty cents per acre for grazing acres. Majority of Bob's ground is grazing acres, or classified as grazing, so it's gonna be in that twenty to fifty cent range. The way our budgeting process works is, any money left over at the end of the year carries into the next budget and reduces that rate. And if we have a tough fire season, we may spend that budget and, or more, and then we have to make that up in the following year. And so that's the fluctuation in the rate, and that committee's tried really hard to maintain that fairly consistent over time.
So Dustin, what you're saying there, what I heard you say, I think, was that, say, this ten acres that Bob's talking about, at the high end, if it's grazing, it's gonna be five dollars. But isn't there a minimum rate, so it's gonna be higher than that?
The minimum rate set in statute is that we can't charge less than eighteen seventy-five per acre, or per, per a lot.
Yeah.
And so that's part of, you know, I mean, everything is laid out in ORS four-seven-seven, what we do and don't do. And, don't quote me, I think it goes back to the nineteen fifties is where, where a lot of that language comes from. In the last, when we implemented this change, we say change our boundary, actually, our boundary changed in nineteen ninety-eight, through the actual OAR rule-making process is how that boundary was changed, long before my time here. And so there was public hearings and, and that whole process being filed with the Secretary of State and everything to, to change that. In ninety-eight, essentially, we used to have a donut hole in the Goose Lake Valley. That donut hole went away. And so essentially, everything in the Goose Lake Valley was protected by ODF, or could, or was within our district to be protected in ODF, by ODF. What we did four years ago was went through the classification process and tried to just update our process, or update our, our maps with, with better technology, get it into electronic format versus our old file cabinets full of paper maps. The other place our boundary changed, which was a little more significant, was, used to follow the forest boundary pretty tight up in the Clover Flat area, now it's down to the Clover Flat Road. So there's a pretty large swath of private land there that changed in ninety-eight. So all of those areas that were included in ninety-eight, up until two thousand and twelve, were receiving essentially that protection at no cost for those number of years, fourteen years. From two thousand and twelve, when we went through reclassification process, we had to figure out where, where in this valley made sense for ODF to protect and not to protect. And there's, the classification committee went through quite a process, but essentially, what we looked at is, where does the vegetation change? From majority of the ground being some sort of agricultural use to maybe more wildland use. So where we landed essentially was at the toe of the slope around the valley. And in some places, that's a little easier, better defined than others, but, so then essentially, the next issue was, that brought us in to a lot of the rural districts as well, for a little bit of overlap. And so when there's multiple jurisdictions, how do we define, have an easily definable line essentially on the ground? It's hard to find those section lines and township and range lines on the ground. So where do we, where do we move that boundary, or have that boundary, so a person on the ground can say, yeah, that's in ODF, or that's not in ODF? Because when we're talking wildland fire, there's, the wildland agencies, ODF, Foresters, BLM, still have a lot more resources that they can bring to bear than a lot of our rural departments. And if somebody thinks that it's an ODF ground and orders an air tanker, for say, on a fire, or just even a helicopter, just one of those resources could end up significantly impacting the budget of a rural department, if it was not in our jurisdiction and it was in there. So we wanted something that was definable. And so we looked at the toe of the slope and kind of moved that line one way or the other slightly defined, and more definable, piece, you know, something definable on the ground, so a road, or, or something in that irrigation ditch, or something like that. Then we looked at, because what Larry spoke of and the impacts to the assessor, every time we, that line went through a lot and it split it, that created multiple accounts for that lot. And so then we looked at, you know, are we taking a ten-acre lot, and we're just taking a corner off of it for an acres in and nines out? Does it make sense for the whole thing to be in, or the whole thing to be out, versus creating a bunch of split lots? We couldn't avoid all the split lots, but we, I think we minimized them probably down to about a quarter of what there could have been. And so anyways, that got to where we were at, and the line fairly definable on the ground, and, and tried to minimize the impact to the assessor, and also be somewhere where the fuels, or what was gonna burn, is, you know, different from a agricultural piece of ground to more of a wildland piece of ground. That's kind of how we got to where we're at, and how Bob's piece of ground got in, in that, in our protection and outside of our protection. Last year, the Klamath Lake District, we had just shy of a hundred fires in the district between Klamath and Lake Counties. And ninety-five percent of those, even though we had the Moccasin Hill, Bryant, Ferguson fires, and Oregon Gulch fires, and then there's Algama out of Klamath Falls as well, five significant fires. Ninety-five percent of the fires that we suppressed were at ten acres or less, most of those being in, in the half an acre or less.
So your fees can change based on the type of year you have, like, no more than fifty, it's only on the fifty percent of it?
Correct, the private landowner, the private landowner pays fifty percent of that, that assessment. A public landowner would pay a hundred percent of that.
Okay, so your budget's been increasing by a block percent? And that would basically give the percentage?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that. It's, it's increased and it's decreased, and so it's not every year, I mean, it's gone both back and forth. And here, I think it's two years ago, the Oregon Legislature passed the Wildfire Protection Act, as it was called. Essentially, there was some, I think a million dollars in that as rate relief for eastside private landowners. And so that Wildfire Protection Act essentially decreased the assessment rate nineteen cents an acre for all eastside landowners, private landowners.
So just another little clarification, so if you have a forty-acre piece of ground out there roughly that you own, my math, on the high end, if it's range land, on the high end, you would pay just slightly over the minimum, the eighteen seventy-five. But the minimum itself hasn't changed, has it?
No, that's been said for a long time.
It's consistent, so if you have, say, forty acres or less in range land, you're probably gonna pay the minimum, there's not gonna be a percentage increase.
One would assume so.
Yeah. So I, I just wanted to go back to Bob, and your example of these increases on a ten-acre piece of ground, it's more than eighteen seventy-five, if we're talking dollars?
No, but on that ten acres, it's eighteen seventy-five.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, the land, I mean, that's eighty-eight percent of the value of that tax on that land. And I still, I, I appreciate that they put out small fires, but I saw, you know, I've been on fires too, and the wind can carry them faster than any truck or any person can stop, and they won't even get in front of them, we all know that. I mean, at the last big fire in Thomas Creek, they were gonna stop it at the creek or at the road, they weren't even gonna get off the road to help stop, stop that one. And, and that's the way to do it, you don't wanna lose lives. And I just don't see that they could put a fire out on my place, on that ten acres, you know, and so, and now, this is the first time I heard it was for fire protection. I was told last time that it complained, that it was just a, a patrol fee. So this is new, that it's a fire protection to me.
It's listed as forest patrol assessment, but it's for fire protection.
Okay, so Larry, you say it's by statute that we collect that?
Yeah.
So we don't have an option, is that what you're saying?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time? I would assume if there was an option, and we decided that we worked on to collect it, Bob, that the state would have to collect it, and they'd probably raise your fees to bill whatever the benefit of it.
Correct, correct, but then you, then I'm going directly to them, and they should answer directly to me.
If we went and bill a foreclosure because not paying that?
Right, I'm sure, then, then go to trial. If they wanna take all this to trial, they can have that ten acres. Because they can't-
So Larry, you say it's by statute that we collect that? So we don't have an option, is that what you're saying?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time? I would assume if there was an option and we decided that we worked on to collect it, Bob, that the state would have to collect it, and they'd probably raise your fees to bill whatever there had been of it.
Correct, but then you, then I'm going directly to them and they should answer directly to me.
If we wouldn't bill, we're closed because not paying that.
Right, I'm sure, then go to trial. If they want to take all this to trial, they can have that ten acres, because they can't access it.
But right now, by statute, we're required to do this, so it would
Correct.
It would take action from our legislative, state legislature to change that.
Well, no, if you don't have the money, and it's not a budgeted thing, you don't have to do things that the state tells you, I mean, some of these, like, let's take the fifty-five mile an hour speed limit. We all know that's not a valid speed limit. I'll bet everyone in this room has driven over fifty-five miles between here and Burns. Maybe excluding one. You know, and the police know it's a bad thing, because they don't even arrest you if you're going fifty-six or seventy, you know, or maybe sometimes, but.
I got stopped for seventy-one.
Okay, I only got sixty-five, but.
Detective Morgan.
I do have to get, we're fifteen minutes behind.
I'm sorry, and I actually appreciate the time, I just wanted to blow off some steam, I guess, but, because I.
Well, no, it's all educational for me to, knowing that it's by statute, knowing that the assessors have been looking at this and everything. Could give you a little bit of a.
Well, the fact that we have no, you know, how can you budget when they can change that value every year? It sounds to me twenties, I was lucky. I mean, if there was a big fire, it could have tripled or four hundred times. And the value thing is the difference, you know, there. If the library only takes nine cents off that ten acres and the hospital only takes fifteen and the whole budget for the county, the general budget for the county is a dollar. Eighteen seventy-five is a lot. It's not, I'd like to see the justification and I can't, I can't find it.
So that's probably.
Where at, all that money goes.
That's probably under farm deferred, so your tax rate's quite a bit less than other properties.
Right, but I.
For general.
I don't, but basically, there's two different formulas. One is within three percent on the value of the land, and the other is on the value of the cost of protection, providing protection.
But since Thomas Creek didn't charge that much, it just seems way out of line that Oregon Department of Forestry is gonna charge you that much.
I think when you get to the two budgets, you will see where the, it takes more for the Department of Forestry budget than Thomas Creek West Side budget.
I'm sure, well, I'm getting back to the same thing about that ten acres Burns. And that's something, you know, when I bought it, I realized that.
Do you have structures on it?
No. I even, if there was a structure, I know there's just not enough water to put out a good structure fire in the wind either. Unless you're on town with a hydrant. You know, and that's the thing all rural people accept. We know that not every fire is gonna be put out, and yet, it sounds like, as much as I pay, it better be guaranteed to be out. You know? I don't, that's, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Cut my taxes.
All right, we're gonna move on to our next item, or we're running behind actually. Nine fifteen, Fremont Highlander, four in the canyon, updating the funding group. Barry, are you the one?
Yeah, I'm kind of saving there. Preparing, Barb's here, Kelly's here. Ginger's probably sort of knows a little bit.
I'm here.
You're here. We're all here. Okay, so Fremont Highlander Ski Club, this is just our latest budget. Kind of show you what our.
Barry, can I ask you quickly, are you gonna start with budget or are you gonna start with an update on just in general?
If I can just start with an update, this is just kind of, we can look at this later. As you know, the Fremont Highlander Ski Club depends on snow, top.
I was gonna say, that'd be pretty short.
As the way this winter's going, and three, it will make three of the last four winters we have done. So we were open in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, or ski season. I'm gonna get my hat on. And we did have to close for a month during that time. Month of January and a little bit of February because of lack of snow. We had great December, we reopened for Christmas break, that ski season. And then that was it. So we've had a pretty good budget in the past, but we have paid our liability insurance of anywhere between fourteen thousand and seven thousand, depending on whether we open or not every single year. We are completely up to date on compliance with our chairlift, which requires annual maintenance and inspections. We have, we hired two people to come from Squaw Valley. Their maintenance folks come and do in-depth inspections on the chairlift. We do annual maintenance on the chairlift by moving a certain percentage of the chairs, a certain distance on the cable, but they're not always gripped on the same spot forever, remember? So we slowly have money leaking out the door. And that's all part of doing business.
Biggest leak is insurance.
Biggest leak is the insurance. And the other problem is, we just haven't had any money coming in because of not being open. So I visited with Commissioner Wears a little bit in early December, and then he suggested I visit with Ginger and gave us some really good ideas. We crafted a letter to all our past season pass holders and explained our situation. We also crafted that letter so that it would reach out to all the businesses in the community, Lake County. And we brought in about two thousand dollars. And it was a little under what we were hoping for, but I think it's kind of one of those things that if you see snow and you have snow here in the community, people tend to get more excited about it and, and, you know, then you in return have more business up on the ski hill. We didn't have that, it doesn't look like at this point in the juncture of the season, we've missed Christmas break, missed our first three day weekend with Martin Luther King Weekend. We got President's Weekend coming up. We're kind of at that juncture now where if we open and pay our full liability insurance, we won't break even. So we pretty much, we will have a meeting next Wednesday, and we'll probably have to pull the plug on the ski season. Which brings us to where we're at financially. If you look on the back page here, very last two things there, it shows our checking and our money market. Sixteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents in checking. Fifteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents in money market. Our treasurer has also paid a few bills since this was produced a week, day or two ago. And so I imagine that's just a little less. Our next liability insurance payment is coming up here first February, and it will be for a little more than, be somewhere between three and four thousand dollars. We have met the minimum of liability insurance payment for years. So we, in other words, we've paid a little over seven thousand already this year. We needed to open to pay the rest of it. And obviously, we're not gonna do that.
The insurance are billed on a quarterly basis, twice?
It starts in December first, so you make a December first payment, which we did. Make a January first payment, which we did, and now February first. And then March first would be your last one. In good years, we paid it all at once. We made the first payment and then paid the rest and then second payment, things like that. So we're in a tough spot. And we're in a spot now to where we can't even begin to make the first payment for next year. We'd like to leave the power on, if possible, we did, we had power bills. We could certainly shut the phone off. We've had all kinds of volunteer work been done. Our hill manager, Jim Copeland, we haven't paid him a dime in a couple of years. And his mechanic at Help for Dave Knowles has some charges to handle as well, all volunteer hours. So we're at a tough juncture. And before, we were completely empty. We wanted to come talk to you, tell us, tell you, you know, if we tell our liability insurance that we're not gonna open and that we only want to make half our payment, you know, they're okay with that, and they'll give us a couple hundred dollars of whatever we've overpaid. But the rule is, then you can't do one single thing up that ski hill for that year because you don't have a full payment. So that rules out, like we had the boat shoot last summer. And there's been talk of having other activities up the ski hill to try to generate community things. So that wouldn't fall under the ski hills liability insurance. The county covered the boat shoot, you know, those days that they did that. And that could, maybe can still be done, I guess it goes from here to here. So that leaves us in another year of no activity up on the ski hill. No functions at the lodge, et cetera, et cetera. I don't want to leave you guys in a bad spot. I know you're not really in a position to give money at this point. Maybe at a different point in sometime in your new billing cycle, maybe that would be a better point. If we were gonna make our next payments and get completely compliant on our liability insurance, it does leave us that flexibility to do other things on the hill. But otherwise, with where the board's at right now, we can't make the next payment. And so we will not have any other activities.
So Barry, the next payment, a full payment's fourteen thousand?
We paid over seven right now.
Yeah, but the full payment's fourteen, so you're talking seven thousand dollars. If there's activities that couldn't happen as a result of only paying half of it, I mean, it's shut down for. Are those activities ones that we've thought about relative to generating revenue enough or profit enough to make it worthwhile to have it open?
Yeah, and I don't think so. I don't think anybody could say that they would.
Yeah, for that amount of money.
Right.
I mean, everything doesn't have to make a profit in order for it to be good for the community and the businesses. I totally agree with that part, but just thinking about other means, you know, going forward, what are we foregoing by not allowing any activity till the next year?
It's kind of a catch twenty-two though, Dan, on the ski hill. If we don't begin to try and utilize our ski hill in the summer and come up with some other options, be it concerts, weddings, barbecues, something, we're not gonna, I mean, we're gonna lose our ski hill. And our ski hill is right now the only winter activity that our kids have that is safe. You can take your kids up, you drop them off. I mean, it's, we're really fortunate to have it. And I think that if we can come up with some ideas for the summer usage, it might offset some of these bad years, but we have to get started. You know, it's, if we don't do anything in the summer, we don't, it's, people won't ever think about it for a venue, so.
Or Vic's a good point, but to answer your question.
Yeah, well, okay.
Those bike races or, which we don't even have trails, other than a service road straight up in Gatlin Hill. I'm not sure how much fun that would be.
Well, I don't misunderstand my question. There's a lot of value that doesn't actually pay the bills in having advanced. I got about, because I can't hold too many thoughts in my head, at least a few. And Ann sitting over here to my left, and I know the county, countywide, we're looking at a complete recreation plan and this, that ski hill, no doubt fits into that in a big way. You know, as we go forward and thinking about things that will enhance our recreation opportunities, our community opportunities. And that ski hill could be a huge one now, and the investment that's being made out there and the improvements on the ski hill right now as far as the runs and cleaning it up, but.
Yeah.
For me, Barb, it's really good to hear that energy of wanting to do that. The ski hill and the people, the passion there, their passion generally is for the ski season. They, they're all workers, they're all busy, and that's where they put all their volunteer time. If there's somebody on the board or someone wants to start working on that summertime thing, and it sounds like you have the passion, that's very encouraging to me because of, I finally acknowledge that the doers at the ski hill are to put all their time in during the ski season. They don't, they don't always have the time during the summer to do that.
I think we do actually, I think we are fortunate to have a small cadre of people that would be willing to work in this. You know, if we can come up with some ideas, generate some ideas that are worthwhile to do things in the summer. I mean, there's, there are a few of us on the, on the board and within the club that itself that would be more than interested in helping in the summer. You know, a lot of other people, that's, like Barry, that is their high season, you know, so.
Yeah, well, it's to fill the dreams. You gotta work on it before it happens. It takes several years to get to that, so it's not like you're gonna create all that revenue in the first year. And like Dan says, sometimes it's the revenue into the motel or the gas stations where you get support and they start becoming corporate sponsors or something possibly, so there, but.
On the, on the insurance, you pay December, January, February, and that covers a whole year.
Here at Crunch Time, you would have to make this.
Yeah, if you have, if you still have paid, it's about three or four thousand dollars.
And if you can't make one day, then it's down for the year.
Your next payment's due by February first, and it needs to be.
So, and like I say, we've met that compliance, we met halfway.
When's the, when's the next one due, I thought it was February first?
Always, okay, I thought it was even that after.
You're putting us on a spot to make a decision for help today.
I guess, you know, we're just kind of laying out, here's, here's.
Before you go forward, Barry, and I appreciate what Barb just said, but it's not so much about spending money, although I'm not sure where, either from, different people have different ideas and interests of budget, et cetera. But are we planning on actually utilizing the access as a result of having liability insurance between, say, we don't open the ski hill, but we're going to do these other things? Are we, I mean, are we just gonna pay it to have the ability and not have any thought about what we're really gonna do?
All I was, yeah, all I was saying, you know, I think the boat, boat club would like to have their boat shoot again. And we can do some exceptions with county insurance, things like that. But we don't have anything, we don't have a bicycle course or a mountain bike course up there.
So where I'm coming from, just as one commissioner, is the notion that if the county J C or, you know, can cover an event or something through our insurance, we can put our support, our support and potential efforts, because you are broke for all intents and purposes, we would hopefully next year being snowy, towards our new budget year, under some, you know, whether it's a one-time request, the way we do the budget, something that would be able to allow the ski club to know that they can open, that those things would, if the money's going to be there. As opposed to making an investment of seven thousand now with only, say, one activity planned for this year.
Yeah.
I don't think that'd be, no, I don't think that'd be a great investment for anybody.
So let me ask if there was, it's talked fire today, but through the fire event, and an agency wanted to stage there, if you don't have liability insurance, could they stage there?
I think the county could take that on.
Yeah, the county owns that property, so. Events that we want to have out there, we can make that work.
And federal government self-insure.
Well, some of this is sort of news to me on the county side, making it work. If we make it work, why are they paying liability insurance at all?
Yeah, you know, to pay seven thousand dollars and then them say all events would be excluded the rest of the year when you aren't even skiing, that, that seems excessive, but we own the property. You know, events that you want to hold during the off-season, I think we could find a way to make it.
So does it have a twenty-year lease agreement with the Highlanders? Back when the agreement was, it's a day tuck on the liability. With skiing, there's a high potential for broken legs and even death. And so years ago, it was to keep the county from that exposure. Everybody knows if you're never, if there's an agency, the deep pockets are gonna be for millions.
There's only a couple of insurance companies in the United States that insure ski areas. And we have one. And if we, we just want to stay in good standing with those folks so that we don't have to go out and shop, because we're actually at the cheaper of the two that I know of.
So if you had the full liability, would cover any other events there?
No, we're, we're in good shape now. I'm just stating, we're just, we're gonna tell them we're not gonna open. I'm just stating, we're just, we're gonna tell them we're not gonna open.
But if we paid the full amount, does that cover anything other than skiing? Any other activities?
It does.
Well, let's go back to what Jay was just saying. I guess I'd be curious to know if the county was the one that was carrying the liability for all activities on that piece of ground. We can't do that?
No, we're, we're excluding the skiing, but, you know, other activities that you would have. Like if you wanted to use the, the building out there for dinners and barbecues, that certainly would cover that. The Volmans Club doing that thing, we can do all that, but.
So then there's no reason that they set down dollars for the rest of this year?
Right.
Because it'll cover.
Any income to the county?
No.
It just won't be covered under the Ski Hills liability.
Right, right.
So you can forego the, therefore, the payment, because chances of getting enough snow to make it, ends meet is pretty nil. And then county can co-insure or use our insurance.
For other events.
Let me, I'll go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna have to be schooled on that, because we may get an array of all kinds of events that want to be there. Is there a list of what events would qualify? That's the county decision to talk. And I would think that the, that your board would want to know what be part of what events are gonna go there in case there's damage or a fire and all these other things.
When you've got activity on that hill, assuming the weather's nice enough too, that's, you're not gonna want conflicting activities going on while they got logged in.
I would hope to have conflicting activities, Dan.
Just too busy.
Dangerous activity.
But the gist is, if, if we forego, if you guys forego the last payment, they'll have you out, how much, seven thousand? Thereabouts. And for summer activities until next year, the county could cover those. But anytime you have one plan you had to discuss, or at least upfront, discuss with Jenny, what activities may not the county want to do.
Well, I, I would think if our organization wanted to have an activity, they would take it to the board, the Ski Hill Board, they would say this would be an activity that fits the operations of the Ski Hill. And then you talk, okay.
Sure are the leases of that land.
And right now, we haven't had a lot of opportunity, but, you know, we have to use it as a fire camp. That's certainly an opportunity, an opportunity for the county to make a little money.
You have a question?
Barry, I know the Ski Hill uses horse crews from the President de New work up there to get ready for ski season. So does the insurance help cover the cost of if someone was injured during doing horse crew or volunteer work up there? Because you always, there's always prep to get ready for ski season. Without, you mentioned earlier, nothing could be done up there if we don't pay that insurance. Does that mean getting ready for next ski season couldn't happen, do you?
Well, it's the liability side. We do have a workman's comp insurance to do all that. They would, I guess they would be paid status sports if they did something. So they would fall under that, so they'd be covered.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that.
If that type of person is, falls in that category.
So if it doesn't happen, can we still do work up there to get ready for next ski season? With the horse crews, can we service work or?
Yeah, and any of the board that's up there volunteering their hours is gonna go and do work. Whether you're covered, maybe you take some personal, you know, risk, it, I have really thought about.
So the dollar amount, if you don't pay, what's next, how much do you need?
So, the next season?
It's more about next season.
You have to keep the power and everything.
We'd like to keep the power on, keep some of the things going so that they don't completely shut down. You know, it's that asking them. We could certainly shut off the phone. The phone is a, it's got a recording on, tells us when we might be open, you know, it's got a little message on it. That's a cost we can get, we can get rid of. We're down to the power, and it's like.
Jay, for the summer, if they didn't pay this last installment, we covered it under ours this year. Any additional costs to account to that?
No.
What we're looking at for next season, though, Brad, you know, we're obviously looking at liability insurance again. We have empty fuel barrels to run our cats, to groomer, you know, take care of that. We would have some payable startup if we did open. And if we do open, then we've got some money coming in too, so it isn't bad. We also will have maintenance that will have to be done again, whether you open or not. Need to have those squaw valley folks come back again. And then I believe this next year, we have to do a load test, which is an additional weight test that goes on the chairlift, it's an extra cost.
Well, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, it's so tough as we're sat here in a public setting and thinking, but you would get the money from our Parks and Rec side after July, twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred. I can't remember what that is, Dave. You guys paid twenty-eight. If it's after July, this is something that could come to us, open request, open request during the budget time of less than dollars that could possibly come in. We can look that way. I'm still, on the liability insurance, I'm really curious on that. You don't pay your liability and we cover that, are you guys still really covered and protected?
For other activities?
Yeah.
Good question.
What's your exposure from that other activity happens out there and it goes above and beyond? I mean, whenever Craig Foster misses the target and Roddick creates a spark in the fire, I don't, I guess, the county.
What liability is gonna cover? What our liability insurance is, any activity that's done up there will be covered by your liability insurance that year. So that seven thousand dollars is just the place for next year.
Yeah, so, the thinking of activities, when I'm there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the full amount.
It's interesting, because they're not the landowner. A lot of times, liability falls on the landowner, no matter who's operating on it. So it's kind of, it is a gray, that's why both work.
But on their, on their insurance, the landowner is pretty long. This is your liability charge to the county, correct? We're, we're listed on your liability insurance, so you cover us as being the landowner, not the state.
We're, we're down there as through my Highlanders Ski Club, and the county's listed as a.
By our co-insure.
I'm, I'm looking at this spreadsheet, and I'm not seeing, and maybe it's built into one of these two line items, but I'm not seeing the park and rec dollars for this year, for income.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they got put in as a line item.
But I mean, under the total income, that twenty-eight hundred oughta kinda stick out like a sore thumb. If we paid there.
Yeah, we, we collected that right here in December. That helped us pay the bills, pay liability insurance.
It could be under donation, that thirty-eight hundred dollars. It'd be my guess, it's maybe what you guys brought in on the spreadsheet. If not, it'll make it look better if there's twenty-eight hundred, it's not there.
We need to show it as a line item.
But what's in front of us right now is whether we make this last insurance payment or not, and then what plan do we have for next year?
We can talk about next year in July, like you suggested.
Well, it would be sooner than that, open request due February, up to date.
General plan's supported open request due February second, but I think in this instance, the rest of the budget information's due at the end of March. I think allowing it to the end of March is probably the wisest.
And I, I think it'd be appropriate to work with our lands manager, which is Dave, where some of the money comes out of our parking rec board.
My attorney also works with Jenny.
And on the insurance side, yeah, but as far as bringing an open request forward, be pretty much under county lines, I would think, unless you guys have different thoughts.
Just so long as it gets in there, that'd be a good starting point. He works with me and Jenny.
So if we kind of, if it's something that's approved through the budget costs and everything, it's not a long, it's money that operates, which should maybe turn your, that's why I'm listening.
Well, I'd really like to see.
It's tough coming before.
I'd like to see a full cost of liability.
It's not gonna get Jenny snow.
No, that's okay. I'd just say I'd like to see building a full cost of the operations as it relates to liability for the fleet. Those fuel tanks we've talked about before, Barry, and I was out there a few months back. So that you start off on solid foot with your inspections, so that you don't have to be wondering how you're gonna make ends meet, and then hopefully you'll have a good snowy year and you'll generate good revenues and.
I think we've done everything we could as a board. You know, like you say, the ski area's in good compliance with the chairlift, the lodge is in basic shape. But you can only do so much when you don't. And I don't know whether, you know, for how long this bad cycle's gonna stick with us, but as far as weather patterns, hopefully it'll change.
I have one last question, and it's the whole county wide, but I'm gonna ask Ann. Is anyone currently from, that is affiliated with the ski club, setting in on any of these meetings as far as our?
No, but they will be invited specifically to the community workshop on February twenty-third. So that's in the evening, five to seven. I don't know that's gonna take the full two hours. The stakeholder group was a list of about twenty organizations, and we were looking at agencies and community representation for that, not necessarily recreation groups, or else that list would have been a hundred. So we just had to make a cutoff on that. So that community workshop date, we're gonna be sending out invitations on that.
Great.
This park and rec plan somewhat increased, and what we may have some creative thoughts that may address future years.
I have talked with the task team about the Ski Hill specifically. About, you know, number one, we, we don't wanna lose it. We don't wanna lose anything that we have right now. So ideas to increase revenue, to increase marketing, to do what we can. And I think, you know, between asking that question and the community, but this group also looking at it, I hope we have some good ideas coming forward.
The way this budget works, when they send you a fifty-dollar fee to be listed in a magazine for ordering for one of your skiers, you gotta think about that fifty bucks. That's how tight this is, so, you know, that's kinda where we're at, I think.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding this spreadsheet appropriately, Barry. Right now, for you paid the minimum, your budget's in the negative, almost five grand? Is that what I'm seeing today, because you made that payment, you're, you don't have, or, other than you have some account bound checking and market down, market, money market? I'm trying to figure out exactly where you guys are at. Where are you at today?
Your bank account?
Yeah, these, these very bottom lines here. Mine is probably a power bill and a phone bill. So we're probably, you know, a couple hundred bucks less than what's shown, is what we got.
My guess worth knowing is if, do you have enough money to operate until the county open request could come in and, and help you for an operation next year?
Well, I don't foresee any extra costs right now at this time.
I think we can maybe.
You know, keep some power on and all that shit.
Talking about Jenny, Jenny, I'm on.
Well, we don't expect our power bill to go up. It's less than a hundred bucks at the time. Like I said, we can, we can cut the phone bill off, which is fifty or sixty bucks, but, you know, it'll be right down there until July, so it'd be probably about a thousand dollars in the last.
So I'll just put it out there, you're comfortable waiting until July to get some money. You'll make it till July. Don't, how about, how about we take a five-minute break? And you guys, they'll be there a little bit, I'm gonna delay our ten o'clock, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we can catch our breath, come back. Sorry, screen.
That's okay, that's okay, we gotta keep the Ski Hill.
Jay and I are working on a response to your questions yesterday about the audit. We'll help you out with some kind of basic, why we gotta do that, what it means, just get your language around that issue.
Okay, yeah, yeah, definitely.
So I haven't worked on it yet, but we'll get it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'm a little confused, because I'm not.
Yeah, you know, every municipality is required under Oregon law to get audited every year. And so it's just the report of that process.
Yeah, we have it.
I'll help you.
All right, thank you.
That's an interesting one.
Read that audit and go to sleep. Like, that's nighttime snoozing material.
Yeah, I re-listened to the audio to kinda get my head around it, and sometimes, you know, can't really get it sometimes.
Some of the things we were talking about yesterday aren't necessarily even audit-related, their process, which is not even, so it's, that's why.
Just anything that the public needs to know, just let me know.
Yeah.
Insurance. Yeah, the payment is three or four bucks a month.
How you doing?
Pretty good, good. That's the only thing that used to be cash.
And I guess, well, you get an answer from insurance, that's directly, I don't know how you can make a difference without that for sure. But my question, it seems like in my past.
So we don't.
It's a whole time, and then they clear.
Yeah. I'll be looking to. Oh, I'll talk about.
I haven't passed, I've already weighed on.
It's a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four thousand.
But the Murray's set up on.
But we're looking at three dollars for this new business. Yeah, so that's why I would be a little concerned.
...
Okay, so we're back in session.
Not familiar with your budgeting process, but when July 1st happens, we have this request that we put in in March. How long is it before the funding would take effect?
As fast as anyone can cut the check.
She can have it all written down.
Because I mean, I don't think it's any question, we're going to need some help in order to get open next year. And I think you can see that you have quite a bit of, you have that support.
Right.
It just has to go through the process.
So at this point, with the money we have on hand, knowing that we've met our minimum liability insurance, I think we're comfortable holding tight at this point. And we'll revisit it in the next budget cycle.
Okay, with that said, Barry, if it gets to between now and July 1st that you get to where the, you guys, you know, you have to tell to keep things moving, come back to us and we can find a small amount to help keep going until July 1st. We would definitely consider that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Worked with Ann and Dave on getting that open request together.
Yeah, let's get those, let's make sure we get those dollars into that budget.
And have somebody to participate in the park rec.
I think they're all in there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
It's a great experience, knowing you've come.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming, Joe. Sorry, Mary.
That's okay.
We'll go along with our 10 o'clock, the E S D business associate, associate agreement. It's okay.
Right.
For the county public health.
I would like to say a little bit, this is still part of our health integration that we were kind of charged with back early spring. So far, what we've done is we've established a family follow-up program with the hospital and we've increased like hearing screens from 30% to 70% of newborns. We have initiated health integration team meetings with mental health, Head Start, DHS Navigator, hospital navigator, primary care, Warner Mountain, Man Primary Care, North Lake, public health. And we meet monthly on referrals, communication, that sort of thing. We've also gotten an extension for our Cover Oregon, so we're still doing insurance for the community. And this business associate agreement is more in line with the early learning hub metrics. It is with E S D for a family resource person. And actually, it's going to be two people. It's going to be Michaela Berry, who's going to be more of a secretarial position, and Jill Harland, who will be doing some education and home visiting. And when we first started talking about this last fall, it was understood that it would pretty much be a fee per service. And when I talked to legal counsel, he felt that a business associate agreement would be enough documentation to get us started. And then we met last week and it looks like we would be able to get the entire $35,000 without a fee per service. At that point, and Bob Nash is looking into that, that point, we would need an M O U, which Bob is working on, which we request also just to define our workload a little bit better. So the business associate agreement is just to get us started, get the packets ready, get us rolling in that contingent upon like an M O U within the next month or so, depending on what Bob finds out if we can carry over those dollars. So that's what this is about.
Yep, all right. Read your cover page and legal counsel's recommendation, the up to $35,000 answer and just whether or not it would be for this year and if it could be carried over.
Right, they got the money last June and they had some trouble doing it. And our first proposal was met with a fee per service that we would get X amount of dollars per hour. And then in talking to Bob last week, he was saying that if, because people are lagging a little bit and getting this position filled, that he thought that we could do the entire $35,000. It wouldn't be a fee per service, or wouldn't be per hourly, per hour. And we would get quarterly, we would send in quarterly invoices and they would pay those. But that's, we know we've got a certain amount of money till June and that's going to be hourly. And I talked to Ann about another line item, so we can track that. We're still working on, like I said, the M O U. We have a job description, but it's really vague. So we want to make sure that we meet the early learning hub metrics when we provide the service.
Okay, I'm going to probably talk out of school here, so I understand that. Now, Douglas County's our hub for, and that was all part of early learning. Have we done that? And so what does this mean with that?
Douglas County gave Lake County $35,000 for a family resource position. So we've been talking to the Lake County Early Learning to say, you know, we know child development, we do hub visits, we do ASQs, we can do the screening, we can do referrals. It's best to work with us as an established agency and integrate our services rather than hiring another person.
That's what I'm supposed to do for us, so I guess my point is it looks like it's working appropriately.
Yeah, I think it's going to work well.
You're going to come a long ways in integrating, so we're not doing, cause that duplicate.
Well, I was going to say duplication of services. Yeah, we found that a lot in our, in our health integration team, there's a lot of duplication of services. And we're trying to say, you know, who's the best fit for that and that sort of thing. So it's going to be a learning process. It also is going to help, hopefully we'll be able to carry it over next year, help with our, with our budget as far as targeted case management goes. Because unless the state approves our increase in targeted case management, we're going to lose about $6,000 from the state budget, so.
So for today's purposes, Mary, just to restate this and see if I'm right. The business associate's agreement will provide us with a mechanism to provide the service bill on an hourly basis. If Superintendent Nash comes up with an M O U going forward, then we would be contracted for a set amount with certain requirements.
Correct.
And so this would all be in this budget year by June, correct? Did I read that right?
Yes, well, I don't know how much is going to be in this budget year because I don't know how many hours we're going to work.
Okay, so the money's available until...
But $35,000 is available that may be carried over through.
It may be carried over.
And that would be in, Bob said he would have the answer to me by the end of this week. So any money that's carried over would be included in my next year's budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the business associate's agreement as presented.
Motion's been made in second to approve the business associated agreement as presented. Any further questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair.
Yes, I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but to let Mary know, maybe we could have a conversation. I'm a little bit familiar with some very creative, innovative things that have been happening in Douglas County with some of the early learning and the services that you're talking about that were supported in a grant through the Ford Family Foundation for integration and collaboration. So I don't know, but I wonder if maybe, I don't know, are you aware of that? And you might, I mean, I'm just thinking that it might be a resource for you. I don't know if it fits at all.
I'm sure Jillian and, I can't remember the other lady.
Jessica.
Jessica.
Might know about it?
Would know about it because they're in Douglas County and I think they wrote.
Okay, so that's a good conversation you could have offline. And so, Mary, you probably need to talk to you of that.
Mary, the next integration meeting is tomorrow? Last Wednesday.
Or health team integration, yes, at 8:00 at Men Hall. Yes.
Okay. You didn't have anything else, did you, Mary?
Nope, I didn't.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Oh, thank you guys.
Didn't mean to run over today. Next item on our agenda is 2015 Board Liaison Considerations, Board of Commissioners. We need to check if anybody's in the hallway, need to come in.
Do we just leave that open?
Yeah, that'll be fine, thank you. I ran her out.
You did. Mary?
Jay was going to come back after this, Commissioner. Were you looking for Jay Collins?
I wasn't, but if he was going to come up, I don't know if there's any need for Jay to be here. Do you guys, we don't need Jay here for...
You know, I've had you mention you were looking for Jay, he was in the hallway.
No, I just seen if anybody was in the hallway. Okay, 2015, but if Jay wanted to be here, we can definitely...
I'm sure he'll come back.
Well, we'll move it forward on it. All right, we will move to the next one, come back to the liaison. Request for quote special transportation vans. Denise.
Okay, so as you gentlemen are aware, we were awarded the latter to that two week grant from fall. The request before you is for me to be able to go out for requests for quotes from the procurement dealers that are part of the Oregon procurement program. There are only four of them, so we'll see what we get back. This is for two vans. One will be used for transportation services in Salt Lake. One will be used for transportation needs in Central Lake and Aurora Lake. So we'll see what we'll get back for ADA accessible lane on its own.
What city pass through capacity of those vans?
Five to seven persons. We've asked for one ADA spot on the van. If there's opportunity for two, those are, we've asked for those as well. But we do want to stick to one because I don't think that we'll have, for those short businesses, we're not going to have probably more than one.
If there's no other questions, did the team motion?
I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion that we approve the special transportation van R F Q request as presented.
Second a motion. Motion's been made in second to approve the request for transit vehicle price quote, R F Q as presented. Any other, any further discussion? All these are past three dollars, special transportation dollars.
But it's correct.
For the record.
It's correct. For the record, we were awarded $105,000, so we should get to there.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carried. Okay, going back to 2015 Board Liaison Consideration, that was tabled last time. First year we always look at this, so it's tabled. We received a letter from one of our citizens with some request from a citizen to change liaisons. At that time, those liaisons were mine. I have spent time, I've met with everyone in those departments and I talked to everyone in those departments in link, that there would be absolutely, would offend me not at all if they wanted to have a different liaison. There wasn't one of them that said anything different, that they would, they just want to keep it the way it is. I'm comfortable with that. So as far as I'm concerned, there's no need to change liaisons.
Commissioners, this is for the whole board of commissioners. I wasn't aware of the letter. I wasn't aware that my department was being included in that letter. So I find it somewhat offensive that there's a group of folks, or a single individual, I'm not exactly sure, speaking on my behalf without checking with me first. I find that very offensive. I don't, I understand I have a liaison commissioner, but in my job, in my role, my duties and my budget, I find myself sharing the wealth. It's not just one commissioner that I harbor towards. I work with all three of you, correct? So I find it very offensive that my department was thrown in that letter without first, one, talking to me and two, finding out what my ideas were, whether good, bad, or indifferent, what I thought about my liaison. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that I wasn't, I'm not happy that my department was spoken for without first speaking to me.
Jake, I personally, I was here that day and I appreciate your comments. Only one person signed it. A lot of the letter referred to we, or they, I don't know. It was more than singular. And so I asked for a copy of all those who felt that way and I never received that copy. So your comments fit with, I think, how I felt.
Well, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make it clear that I am comfortable with Commissioner Winters being my liaison. I don't, but no offense to you two, because I end up working with you two anyway.
I'm very offended, but that's okay.
That is exactly what we promote is, there's every commissioner. Liaison is just one of the commissioners you go to to help promote or talk about things within your department that you're working on, so.
Commissioner, and we all know this, I mean, it's like we're chasing our tail for no good reason. But to that end, I know the other two commissioners do the very same thing I do. If a department comes in and it's something that's, you know, needing more than just me giving a little bit of input or awareness to share with the board, I always say, go visit with the other division. And I have people that come to my office that I'm not the liaison to and they were asked to come and talk to me. So we work well on that.
And Commissioner Winters does that for me as well. He wants me to share, share that. And even if he didn't want me to or didn't tell me to, I would do that anyway because it's common courtesy. Because I just don't work for one commissioner, I work for the board commissioners, so.
Well, I input on that letter, checked the letter.
Well, I put on that letter, just a letter, request, one shoulder and the other side. So, it's really up to us to decide where liaison is going to be.
That's a very true statement. It is up to the board of commissioners, the three of us, and I appreciate that, Commissioner. At this time, I, I would like to just do consensus, we stay where we're at unless you two have anything you'd like to change. I'm good with the liaisons that I've been doing.
I would toss out there, I would be happy to trade airport for public health. Public health, I work with public health and a little, I hate to kind of cross over too much. But with public health, early learning, mental health, et cetera, it just gives a tight fit. And airport is something different, maybe with, with Porsche was yours, so you'd be happy with that.
I'm finding that. The only other comment I'll make is in our liaison assignment, I, I have been the liaison for Lake County Chamber and as I've discussed with both of you in the past, relative to, similar to how we used to do it with the North End. I'll just cut to Jason. We are not an official board member of the chamber any longer, but we're invited to and we're asked to come to any chamber meeting we'd like to.
That's a subject topic, present yourself.
Yeah. So, I know Commissioner Winters has been talking north end of the county about the chamber, maybe changing their dates so we could get back to where one, one of us or all of us are available.
That's exactly what I mean to the North Lake is get their date changed back and they have a meeting on the tenth, but it's not ten, it's there. And back on airport, I really enjoy airport, I'm the strongest supporter of it. But with my load, if I can just do a even swap, it just makes things a little easier.
Works for me, works for both you. Consensus.
Yep.
With that?
Do the citizens understand what liaison assignment means?
You know, you know, Jay, I'm not sure that the citizens truly understand. They, they think that there's some authority comes with liaison and there's no authority, individual commissioner cannot make decisions. We can be the conduit, help promote, such as whenever I reorganized juvenile and adult corrections, community corrections, or.
Yeah, community justice.
Community justice, I have a brain lapse there. So, I'm not sure that the public fully understands that it's, it's an avenue for department heads and everybody to work with the commissioner that might bring something forth. Maybe reorganization, maybe look at the budget, or maybe just a project, those type of things. One thing we didn't reflect on is, is early on this year, we did do a survey of department heads out there and elected officials and it come back resoundingly, Denise done that, resoundingly that the department heads and elected officials would like to have individual commissioner as a liaison instead of just doing away with liaison, we have just everybody go wherever they have. Surprised me, that in a way that, that sort of makes you feel good, that department heads want to go meet with one, one commissioner. As Jake says, he doesn't want to have to train another commissioner.
You know, it, 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 that's not any group training piece or who's, who, who am I giving the best answer from so I can serve for the best answer? It boils down to the comfort level, having one person that I know I can call. And if he, if he's out, I'm, I have that same comfort level moving, moving on. None of, a lot of things don't rise to the level of emergency, I have to talk to someone now. It's just nice knowing that I have one person that I can talk to about something off of, to get some ideas before I spread the wealth amongst the other commissioners. So, it's not, it's not a training piece, it's not a personal piece, it's not who I like best. It's, it's just a comfort level, knowing that I have one person that I can talk to, to get the rest of my ducks in order. And all three of you, I could look for, and, and whatever, I'm not.
But Jake, you're my favorite community justice director.
Fortunately, I'm the only one right now.
To, to get back to it, Jay, I think there's misconception of what liaison really means.
No, authority.
Yeah. Right, the only authority that you have is as a board. You're not really supervisors of those departments.
No.
There are, there are small towns in the state that have liaison assignments where they really are the supervisor of, you know, certain things and they do have super supervisory authority, but that's not what we're talking about here.
Correct.
Almost lost out like years, Commissioner Winters took over the sheriff and DA and he's already with the probation. So, it's all similar function, so it's good to have one person that is kind of go to. Same with my just on public health, but been pushing for integration of auto services and it just helps facilitate that.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so consensus, we've made one change, we're moving on to our next item. And we do have eleven o'clock, Jay, are we still on ready?
Wait, just whenever you're done with your public meeting, we'll go into that. Jim will be here by eleven.
Okay. Next item, Special Transportation Fund Title Four Program Policies.
It's actually should be Title Six. I wondered if it's in relation to.
I was looking at this.
Uh-oh, did I have it wrong on the agenda? I've done this, pardon. Anyway, so this is in relation to funds, federal funds specifically and some state funds that we receive for special transportation. It's for Civil, Civil Rights Act that we will ensure that our providers and that the county operates that program in association to those rules.
Federal funds.
I did, just to admit to you, I did still this policy from Sherman County and Plymouth Basin Transit. It's pretty standard across the state.
It does have a reporting yearly.
That is correct.
You're geared up to do that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I have a contact person at ODOT to help me do that. We actually did the reporting for this year. We're.
Yeah.
I mean, it's incredibly wise to borrow from others, more appropriate that.
I'd just like to admit it, so you guys don't think that I'm a policy writer.
You take some of the other best product and we enhance it.
I do have it reviewed by legal counsel and our ODOT rep, just to ensure no issues working out.
I just have one little question on the, actually last page, about minority representation case and title. Can you be emphasizing greater representation from minority?
What do you mean, specifically?
Well, right now, we have one hundred percent Caucasian.
We don't, we have other ethnic groups here.
No, I mean, on the.
Is that what it shows?
It says that.
It shows the board commissioners and the SDF advisory board in the state, about a hundred percent.
They are, that's true. I don't have any remaining numbers and, or you gentlemen, so.
How many minority? Dance minority.
You're a foreigner, you're not a minority. Your own plan.
Technically, I have the American. Look, anyway, on, on that topic, we should always be open to opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's the emphasis.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the SDF Title Six Policy as presented.
Motion's been made in second to approve Title Six Program Policy as presented. Any further discussion? I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to tell Denise, thank you for getting this together when that policies in place and they can be handed to the agencies or entities that will be receiving the funds. It covers everybody and makes them be compliant with the process, but thank you very much.
And during our next biennial agreements, once those funds are distributed and whatnot, they're approved, that will be included, that they acknowledge that they plan on following that policy.
I'm not confident that they will control it.
Thank you.
Their likes of patience and loyalty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is meeting minutes, and I do not have them in front of me, Denise. I was up there at the last one. We have January sixth, January seventh, and January twentieth. And I was absent from the twentieth. I was here at the. Is that on any of those missing?
Yeah, I believe it's gone.
On the sixth. Okay.
So. So, I'll just do it one at a time, I'll make a motion for January sixth, two thousand fifteen minutes.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made in second to approve January sixth meeting minutes as presented. Any further discussion?
No, I'm staying because I wasn't there.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries with one extension.
I'll make a motion to approve January seventh, two thousand fifteen as presented.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made in second to approve January seventh minutes, two thousand fifteen as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve January twentieth, two thousand fifteen as presented.
Sorry.
Motion's been made in second to approve January twentieth, two thousand fifteen minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
No.
I'm staying, was not there. Motion carry. All right, department updates. Any department updates, Denise?
Just a reminder that the RFP for this year's biennial for special transportation funds is out and we will be, it's closed on the eleventh, but we have a twelfth and that recommendation will be to you on the following weeks.
Moving on, liaison updates.
I, we'll be on the ninth at ALC Legislative and Public One Hundred and Fifty, and Executive Committee.
On the fourth of February, you're getting Dan on economic.
Now, say again?
On the fourth.
Will you be here in the morning on the fourth? No, okay, I will also be gone that day.
I have that meeting down, it's canceled.
That one's canceled? Okay.
I'll be here.
Okay.
You can probably get your name and everything.
All right, so, I guess I can give some updates. It's looking like that our meeting, our SCOED, SCOAC meeting on the thirteenth. There's a need to have that in Clamath instead of Lakeview for a couple commissioners, maybe even one. Dan having a meeting also, doesn't look like that's going to be a problem. I'm working on that, all three of you are aware of that. So, that meeting could be moved to Clamath Falls on that date. On the, on the nineteenth of February, I will be going to the OTC meeting in Salem, traveling on afternoon of the eighteenth and depending on how long the OTC forum is and be able to actually interact with OTC and do some presentations. May be back on Friday, maybe, traveling on Friday, but my usual traffic, I'll be gone that day. You guys are aware of my other dates that I put out there for personal reasons. I'd like to also, liaison updates, trying to set, I have been interacting with the town with Ray's films, looking at the community service fees with Red Rock Wild Fields, potential community service fees, trying to get together with him and Mike Warren to have some discussion of that. The community service fee presentation joint meeting is going to happen probably two weeks out, maybe three. Ray's working with the town, comes out what they would hope with them, get that to Denise and work with us. There's been a bit of a, of a delay of doing that, it was going to come right away. If you opted to hold that offer a little bit, get through some of these land use and this other stuff right away and then bring that and go forward. Right, no, I keep saying it's coming. We're right there, ready for it. So, it's just a matter of looking at Red Rock Wild Fields, town and county, and get it before everybody. I guess that's part of, off the top of my head, I'm going to discuss right now, liaison updates. Do you have any?
Just on the fourth, I've been on the economic industry meeting on the tenth. I've also been petitioned, North Lake, to move their date and I told them I'd be there on the tenth. On the eighteenth, I'll be acting on some, I may might go.
All right. I'm looking at the calendar here. What a God it's for being in town.
We may need to do something different on the eighteenth. You're here the morning of the eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so we're still okay for regular session?
Yeah. Depending on what our agenda's like, if, if there's a reason that it's going to go along, maybe for that now, but we'll see if the agenda hits culture. That's a regular four meeting date, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We do have two public hearings scheduled for that day.
Oh, okay. Yes, that's very important. There being no other liaison updates. The birthday session, we will adjourn at thirteen minutes to eleven.